Please, roll call please.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Trustee Rassich.
Yeah.
Trustee Wojkowski.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Uh, here. Uh, can we rise to the pledge?
Pledge of the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
Uh, I have three this evening. Uh, number one is I'd like to congratulate Plainfield North for their fourth place state baseball tournament. Uh, this is the first time baseball in Plainfield's brought home a, uh, a trophy. So, congratulations to the coaching staff and the team. Uh, the next one is for the trustees. In your place, uh, this evening when you arrived, you saw there was a question here a little while back on, uh, cars, on the prices that we got for the auction and such. So, this should outline all the, what we got for the cars. And then you will also notice that there's three letters, uh, regarding the, uh, changing of the access, ingress, egress off one hundred thirty-fifth street. And these three businesses, uh, watched the meeting and did not take lightly, uh, changing those entrances and exits. So, I just passed along all those, uh, letters to the board and you can review at your own leisure. And that's all I have.
Trustees' comments?
I have a, a comment, I guess. And it's, it goes back to, uh, our last regular meeting where we approved, I think it was just roughly over a million dollars for the sidewalk, uh, new sidewalks over sidewalk replacements. And I, and I guess it just goes back to the, to the point, I guess, of just wanting to have or hoping to have more discussion regarding certain elements of certain projects that we look at and vote on. I think there was a whole, probably thirty seconds of discussion on that topic and here we are spending over a million dollars, um, on a project to replace some existing and add some new sidewalks. And I just think it's important for the trustees to be able to weigh in on some of these subjects, topics, uh, maybe prior to coming for a vote to see, you know, if, if it makes sense to move them forward or if there are other items that might be more important to spend that type of money on. So, I guess I would go back to the mayor and just ask, I mean, is there a reason that some of these items can't be added to cows? I mean, I went back and looked at some of our car, cow agendas and most of the time we only have one item on the agenda anyhow.
A lot of times, uh, Mr. Persons and his staff have gone through the town and reviewed all the status of the sidewalks and all the roads, and then they rate them for their, in need of repair. And this is coincides with a sidewalk repair. Most of the sidewalks that's being replaced are older sidewalks. These newer subdivisions, uh, they're all pretty well up to date. But we do keep track and, uh, monitor any sidewalks that have fallen. And we shave those if we can't, uh, if we, prior to replacing. But, uh, there is a monitoring going on at all times. And we also have, uh, when they go around and pick up the water meter readings, they have a truck that drives real slow and picks up the readings. He also reviews and writes a report if there's any damaged sidewalks also. So, uh, that's how it's done. And it's been done in the past since I've been here.
I, I also need to point out that what was voted on at the meeting last week was merely a grant application. It wasn't actually the expenditure for any sidewalk replacement. Those are three ITEP grants that we applied for. The, we are seeking, uh, IDOT and, uh, pass-through funds for those particular road projects. It's a very competitive grant. Uh, we've put in for it in the past and actually in the seven years that I've been here, we have not been awarded an ITEP grant. I don't know that, uh, the school, the Park District might have been awarded one, and I'll lean to Mr. Persons to, to address that.
We, we, the last ITEP grant that we had received was actually related to Route fifty-nine and it was a combined application between the state and the village for the decorative street lighting as well as the sidewalks. So, that was as part of the Route fifty-nine reconstruction in the, uh, more, the, I'm trying to use the proper term, the more historic, older part of town, um, that was in need. But, uh, that was the last ITEP application, grant application that was approved, uh, for the village.
And, and as well, when we do go out for our sidewalk survey and the like, that is something that our engineering department does along with, uh, our engineering interns. They also are collecting data for, um, the, uh, road traffic counts, which will go into ultimately the overall condition index, uh, project for the roads. Now, that does come back to the board in the form of a report. The OCI does come back to the village board, uh, so that we can have a longer conversation about the, uh, reinvestment into our road network. But with regard to the sidewalk slab replacement that goes on throughout the year, that is something that is handled by the engineering department. And typically it is on a, as the mayor was pointing out, it's done on an inspection basis and it's, uh, a handful of slabs here and there. Uh, we also do have some ADA requirements that have changed. So, there are a number of ADA sidewalk slab requirements that we also have to take on that are just handle, we, we just handle those somewhat administratively and, um, ministerially, to use an expression that Mr. Prue has, uh, reminded me is a good way to put it.
Mr. Murphy, if, if a resident notices their sidewalk has fallen in front of their house, they're welcome to call the village and report that.
Absolutely. We keep a, uh, we keep a list of all of those. And in many regards, that's really the starting point for the sidewalks lab replacement program.
We've gone to, to the sites of those that have requested. And we have a sidewalk repair that's going to, will take place regardless of the ITEP, will take place in the fall. So, those homes that are in need of, you know, for slip, not slippage, but tripping, uh, dangers, they will take into account and be repaired, be repaired then.
We would encourage your residents to call and report this.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And I guess I understand all that. I guess what I was just asking for is conversation so that the, the board can set the priorities as opposed to maybe the engineering department keeping track of those kinds of things. That's all. And I think it just goes, and I know you, you agree, you said that we're not spending the money today, but I know the next step after that, if the grants come back and everything, then it's gonna be, okay, go forward and spend the money and do the project. So, it's kinda like we've already talked about it. We've, you know, it's in process and all those kinds of things. It just seems to me, I don't know why we would be afraid of having more discussion on the top, some topics. That's all.
Well, the, those that are gonna be repaired will be listed and given to the trustees for perusal. So, uh, I guess if you have questions after you're showing the document, then you can certainly bring up your questions.
Thank you.
Yes.
The other comment I had, I guess, was on the, on the letters that you had made reference to that we received this evening. And I think you made comment that they, um, the letters were written in response to watch. So, I guess I just wanted to confirm, did these people actually watch or did we actually solicit this input from these, from these landowners?
They received the information and wrote the letters. How, how they, or transmitted the information, I'm not sure.
Do you know how they were, received the information?
I received phone calls from those three businesses.
Based upon what?
Uh, they contacted me, uh, to talk about their, the project and the impact it would have on their businesses.
Contacted them prior to the phone calls?
I asked them to write letters after they had talked to me about it.
Contacted them prior to them calling you?
This sounds like a, this sounds like an indictment.
Okay, here we go, here we go, come on.
Here we go.
Come on.
You're asking too many.
No, calm down.
I don't believe that, that many people watched it, number one. And they get three responses from three, from three landowners regarding a topic that was briefly discussed one evening is, it seems like a far-fetched, that's all.
Okay, moving on.
So, can I get an answer to my question? Were they contacted prior to them calling?
I did not contact, uh, Aldi. I did not contact, uh, the landlords that were involved.
An additional comment to answer your question. If you want to talk about, uh, where we spend money and redirecting it, the budget process is the place to do that. We have, uh, five or six committee of the holes discuss the budget. If you don't think we're spending the right place, bring it up there. And get the trustees to render an opinion one way or the other, whether we support your point of view or a different point of view. But from my point of view, I think the public works its next and job of keeping track of the roads. Been following it for ten years. Uh, their inputs are good. They pay attention to what's going on. Do I think they're perfect? No. Do I want to override them? Not necessarily, because I think they're, they're the professionals with hand on, uh, on the job. And for me to sit here and say, I know better than they do, I think is a mistake. But as far as where the money goes, budget's the process. Let's take a look, take advantage of that. It's coming up, uh, another three months?
Yes.
Okay. I've got a couple other comments. A question for Alan or for somebody. Um, gets the water people will go around and look for signs that are down. Well, there's a sign down at fifty-nine. There's a sign down in, uh, next to Circle K in, uh, Jewel Parking Lot. I almost got run over because I knew the sign was there and two cars came, came dipping through as I was trying to pull out of the bank. So, there was a truck blocking, so they couldn't see it. But the sign has actually been over. The one at fifty-nine is actually knocked down, laying on the ground on, on the island. Uh, the other time, it's, it's been a bad week for driving. I drive in Myers and there are four bushes that are so high that in my van, I cannot see over them to see traffic coming. And I had to back up and go to a place where I could actually see the traffic. So, my suggestion is we, whoever's checking that, that we spend some time making sure the bushes are cut back. I still think, uh, in the long run, we ought to make sure we put in deciduous trees and not bushes. You can see around a tree, but you can't see through a bush when it grows, grows up. And the growing season's been very good this year, so there's a lot of blockage. So, I'm not sure who's following through on that, but, uh, you, code enforcement, uh, building, uh, somebody, but if we could check it out, it'd be great. Cause it's a real hazard right now, so.
Typically falls under code enforcement. We'll definitely, uh, take a look at that as well as, uh, as a team here. Um, site, our parking lot maintenance was, uh, brought up in strategic planning. It was new this year or two, as well as the board is well aware. So, uh, we're gonna take a more active role in that. And, uh, just for reference, if you haven't been up there, uh, Menards did completely resurface their parking lot. And it, and it looks pretty good. There's still some other outlots that need some attention. Um, but, uh, I think we're just seeing the beginning of this and we'll push for additional improvements in the future. Definitely the site distances are an important issue and we'll follow up on that.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments?
Yes, I have a comment to make, perhaps to, uh, you know, what I'm about to say is not going to be very popular with an awful lot of people, but yet I, I feel strongly that we in government and, uh, we are, as citizens of this country, have a right to speak. And I'm going to speak about something, uh, about the tragic event in Orlando, Florida with the mass killing of fifty people and the injuring, the wounding of, uh, tens more. The entire incident not only made, I think, America sick, a great number of people sick, but it made me really violently ill in the sense that what is disturbing me, we have in this country now, uh, mass shootings in churches, in schools, shopping centers, military bases, workplaces, and now a disco entertainment center. Is the, now a standard practice to lower our flag at half mask and to have a moment of silence. Last week, we had a moment of silence with this board and I'm not, uh, de-crying what, uh, Ms. Benucci brought forth. And it was a very respectful act. However, I'm asking people, I'm appealing to the public, appealing to everyone. I'm, instead of being silent, I want you to be loud. We have five hundred and thirty-five representatives in Congress in Washington. What I want you to do is contact your representatives and say, what are you doing to stop violence in America? What are you doing about gun violence, about allowing, uh, the sale of weapons, et cetera? Why do we need AR fifteens to hunt, to shoot pests, to have them in our homes? I look back in, over, uh, my history of just the last few years, John Kennedy assassinated, Martin Luther King assassinated, Robert Kennedy, Medgar Evers, John Lennon, James Brady was wounded, Robert, Ronald Reagan wounded. When is it going to stop? What I'm saying to you is, Google your congressman. We have a number here that I would like you to call. The individuals, you have to find your number because it wasn't fair for me to put telephone numbers on our, our governmental address. Richard Durbin, Senator, Mark Kirk, Senator, there are the two senators from the state of Illinois, and Mr. Randy Holgren. Call them up, express your opinion. If you're for that, no gun control, say it. But if you're against it, ask them, what are you doing? Simply ask, what are you doing? You can leave the response on their answering machine, leave your telephone number. I have done it. I've done it with the representatives in the state of Illinois, even those that don't represent me in this district. You, we have to speak out. We have to get this situation, in my estimation, corrected. For Congress not to act, to continue to do nothing is outrageous. Please act. That is my opinion and I feel strongly about it. Thank you.
I want to thank trustee Rassich for his comments. Um, I think both of our hearts are in the right places. We may have different philosophies on how to solve, uh, different types of violence, including gun violence. Uh, I did have the opportunity to visit Paris, France approximately one week after the, um, attack last, uh, I think it was last November. Um, it's an absolute tragedy and we're seeing this in America now as well. Um, one of the cultural differences that Europeans and Americans have is the thought process of guns. And meeting with different people all over the world, um, particularly in Europe, they really do not understand our culture when it comes to that particular social issue. Uh, one variable that we have that Europe does not have is, we have a, essentially an underground railroad from the Philippines through Mexico into America for illegal guns. And I don't necessarily have all the answers on how to stop gun violence. I'm not gonna say whether people should have AR fifteens or not. Um, they do have a use in hunting, uh, wild boar as well as, uh, individuals that feel they have the right to exercise their Second Amendment rights. Uh, once again, though, I do believe our hearts are both in the right place and we do need to stop this violence in our country. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments? Not this would be the time for public comments?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Vicky Pletto. I live in Walkers Grove. Um, I wanted to come and speak today because my understanding is that trustee Peck has reached out to the community to ask people to weigh in on the idea of submitting a landscape design plan that's before the board tonight to sort of an open contest for students to sort of win a scholarship by coming up with the best design. And that may be a fine idea in some instances, but what aggravates me about this instance is that Mr. Peck has a clear history of not putting things to bid and actually had hit the Park District, refused to put a logo design competition out because he said that this was an urgent matter that required professionals to work on it, because we all have logo emergencies that crop up in life. And this not only cost us, we were initially told this would be free because it would be done in-house. It was not. It initially cost something like seven thousand dollars just for the design, not to mention the thousands in the middle of the summer where we were changing the signs across our parks. We changed staff apparel. We had to change the wraps on cars, all because we had to hurry this logo through. And I'm aggravated because I think that some of this is coming from some actual animus against the company that is up for this bid tonight. Um, and I've also noticed that aside from the logo, at the same time, we, you also had no bidding on doing a website resign for the Norman Town Equestrian Center. We paid thousands for that, that never saw the light of day. We never got anything for our public money out of that. And further, there was also an attempt by you to circumvent the bidding rules by bid stringing to do locker room work at the pool by issuing six checks for just under five grand apiece that you ended up having to pull back and retract. So, I think it is rich for you to sit here and use your position to strike out at people who you have a negative history with, instead of working for the people, and dress it up as some sort of attempt to help the youth of the community. You've never been about that. That's really documented. And I resent it. And I would like you to stop that.
Mayor, I have a brief response and I'm not gonna banter back on and forth. Um, I do respect, uh, Mrs. Pletto's right to say, uh, what she wants and what's on her mind. This is public comment time. Um, she's entitled to her own opinion and not her own facts. And she had stated that, um, I had changed the Park District logo. That was a Park District Board decision. Uh, the board voted to do that. That was not done administratively. And this is the village board, not the Park District. I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Not then we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to amend the agenda, to remove item D under the consent agenda and to vote on it as a separate item. So, move? Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Uh, make that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on June sixth, bills paid and bills payable reports for June twentieth, cash and investments, revenue and expenditure reports for May, resolution number seventeen twenty-eight, adopting the twenty sixteen prevailing wage rates for Will and Kendall Counties, and approval of the live scan annual maintenance agreements from Morpho Trust USA in the amount of five thousand seven hundred dollars. I'll move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the items under the consent agenda. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-two seventy, increasing the class R liquor licenses to four, the class K liquor licenses to nineteen, and the class O liquor licenses to five for Vaughn Opera House Inc. doing business as Opera House Steak and Seafood to be located at one fifty, sixty, South Illinois.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Question.
Oh.
Uh, isn't it under not a current liquor license for the existing establishments that there? Is it not gonna be tied into the blue? I'm sorry?
It'll be two, it's two different, um, establishments. That's why they even have two different addresses. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
President.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just so you know, uh, trustee O'Rourke, we researched this and it, it should, it should be two because there's a bar upstairs, a bar downstairs.
I thought originally they were opening early before the one downstairs, before they tied it in with the restaurant upstairs. But it was all gonna be the same restaurant.
We researched it and had to do it the way we did it, so.
Next item on the agenda is Elgar Annexation, one thirty-five oh one, South Lake Drive. We're seeking a motion to open a public hearing regarding an annexation agreement for property located at the southeast corner of Naperville Plainfield Road and one hundred and thirty-fifth street, commonly known as one thirty-five oh one, South Lake Drive.
I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
Yeah, and mayor, if I may just give a, a brief introduction to the board for the, the project here. This is a very straightforward, a request for annexation into the village. Uh, it is by annexation agreement. Uh, the, uh, subject, subject parcel is located at the southeast corner of Naperville Plainfield Road and one hundred thirty-fifth street. Uh, it is part of a, an existing subdivision that utilizes, uh, South Lake Drive, which is a private street. Uh, so the project's contiguous to the village's boundaries along, uh, Naperville, uh, excuse me, along one hundred thirty-fifth street and as well at the corner of Naperville Plainfield Road. Uh, the Plan Commission did consider the case, uh, at its meeting, uh, last month and, uh, held a public hearing as to the question of annexation. Uh, the Plan Commission supported the annexation as a logical extension of the village's municipal boundaries. Uh, it is the property owner's intent to, um, demolish a portion of the existing home and, uh, expand and rebuild the, the house as their residence. Uh, the, uh, Planning Department does have the building plans on file. Uh, we, we've identified no specific, uh, aspects that would require relief or, uh, variation from the village's codes, codes and ordinances. Uh, so this is a, a very straightforward request, just to, uh, come in and extend to the village of Plainfield, utilize our water and sanitary sewer, uh, services and, uh, become part of the village of Plainfield.
This is a public hearing? Are there any public comments? There are no pub-
Mike Martin, twenty-four zero twelve West Main Street. I am the attorney for the applicants. With me is Susan Elgar, one of the property owners. Her husband, Rob, could not be here tonight. He's a local physician and he had work, uh, work duties to attend to. Uh, they've lived in the residence for ten years. Uh, basically what they're doing is they're demolishing it, uh, and they're building in the same footprint. The new residence is only gonna be about four feet wider, uh, and it's gonna have a larger garage attached to it. And they're going from a, uh, three-bedroom split level to a two-bedroom split level residence. So, it's gonna be a lovely home. Uh, and, uh, they've been a, pretty much a member of the community for ten years. And now they want to make it official and connect to the water and sewer. So, are there any questions I can take?
Yeah, uh, Lake Street is private. It's, is it gonna stay private even in front of the residence? Or is that-
Yes, it, it will.
Okay.
Only question I guess I have is construction, uh, it's a very busy intersection. I hope, um, whoever's general contractor for it, uh, will use Lake Drive instead of, um, one hundred thirty-fifth or Pilcher for a lot of the construction. Uh, it's a kind of a sensitive subject. I live four houses up from that location. And right now, they're tearing up a driveway. They've been tearing up, um, you know, parking on both sides of the street for a number of days and-
Sure.
That's a side street. We gotta be careful if we don't mess up, uh, Pilcher.
Well, um, the builder is Bob Michaels. And so, I could give you as, I'll, I'll email you as contact information and I'll mention your concern to him.
Don't need to contact me. Just be aware that it's a very sensitive issue. Even getting out of the driveway that they have is tough because if people don't let them in, they have to sit there a while. It's, um-
I understand. I've, I've, many times.
They're gonna be resurfacing that too before long, hopefully. So, it's gonna be a busy place.
You are gonna resurface one hundred and thirty-fifth.
I hope so. So, okay, thank you.
I had a question, Jonathan. Uh, number eight, it talks about the annexation fees and additional fees. Is there a specific reason why we're waiving all of our fees?
Uh, so that's just simply consistent with the village's, uh, business plan, uh, dating back to, uh, the twenty-ten timeframe, uh, recognition of the economic downturn and the housing downturn. There was not a, um, uh, collection of the, the village's share of municipal fees in terms of a, uh, annexation fee, municipal facility fee, um, traffic impact fee, uh, things of that nature. So, it's consistent with, uh, the village board's policy as articulated in the, in the business plan.
And they reviewed our fees for permits and those kinds of things. You think that should be looked at at this point?
I know the issue of, um, the impact fees is, uh, part of our strategic plan. It's part of an ongoing discussion of, uh, working with the school district and the park district and the land cash values is really the biggest component to, um, the, the overall amount of impact fees that are paid. Um, so that discussion is ongoing in terms of revisiting, uh, what fees are collected and what our standard, uh, policy for annexation agreements in, in new developments is.
That said, it is a single lot and they are paying the water and sewer cap on fees. All we're waiving are some of the other things which we wouldn't ordinarily charge a single lot.
Correct. What's drafted in the annexation agreement is what's consistent with the village board's current policy, uh, relative to those fees. Uh, things like, uh, school fee and a park impact fee. Uh, the applicant has worked directly with the school district and the park district and their position is, they're, they're taking a single, existing single-family home and replacing it with an existing single, single-family home. So, no additional impact fee is due, uh, to those agencies.
I, I understand. I guess the question I was trying to ask was if we've been consistently waiving the village fees for annexation because of the downturn, starting to grow again and we've increased fees for permits and other things, should we be considering maybe reinstating some of those fees? Not necessarily for this one, but maybe in the future.
Correct. And I'm sorry if my prior response wasn't clear, but we are, that, that's an active discussion in terms of, uh, what our current makeup of annexations, uh, of impact fees. Uh, we have, uh, in our staff, uh, working with, uh, researching other communities, what their building permits are, what their fee structure is, and how we fit in that competitive landscape. Uh, so it, it is a, an ongoing item in our strategic plan. And it's something the staff is, is actively working on.
So, to waive these is consistent with what we've been doing?
Our current policy, correct.
It was a board decision, uh, at a time, we thought it was- It was a board decision at a time. We thought it was very important. We haven't changed that board. Support decision again if we want to make a move. So it'll come back to us for discussion.
This is a public hearing. Are there any other public comments? Not. We're seeking a motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular business meeting.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing and return to the regular business meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? There are no other comments or questions. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3271, authorizing execution of an annexation agreement for the property owned by Robert and Susan Elgar, located at the southeast corner of Naperville Plainfield Road and 135th Street, commonly known as 13501 South Lake Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojcowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3272, annexing the subject property located at the southeast corner of Naperville Plainfield Road and 135th Street, commonly known as 13501 South Lake Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wojcowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke? Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Landscape Design Services. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the village president to execute a contract with Upland Design to provide image and landscape design services in the amount of $24,540 plus reimbursable expenses.
Thank you very much. Included in your packet is a proposal from Upland Design to complete a series of community design charrettes, and following those design charrettes to have preparation of some key features leading into our downtown area signage and landscape packaging then for the other entrances within our community, as well as a landscape design booklet that we can use then throughout the public rights of way throughout the village. This came after the 2013 community-wide strategic plan, and in that strategic plan, one of the action items that we were directed to consider was to prepare a series of drawings and concepts for United Gateway, or sorry, Unified Gateway Wayfinding and Street Signage as well as landscaping as part of a municipal signage plan for the entire village. In an effort to keep costs down, we tried, we worked on a plan internally, presented a series of ideas to the village board for consideration with varying success, I think would be the best way to put it. So after we had the 2016 strategic planning session, and again, this idea of having an image and feel to our village was a very strong issue that was raised during those community meetings. We reached out to Upland Design to talk through some ideas on how we could bring this together, and we were really impressed, I was very impressed with Michelle Kelly's approach toward making sure we had a community charrette component to developing these so that we could really get a good sense of what the community considers to be the vision and look of our community. And from there then, of course, it would include developing a series of package of designs. Those would be vetted by staff and also by the village board, and ultimately brought back then for construction documents to be developed that we could then go out for bid, at least for the monuments in the downtown area. Michelle Kelly is here to be able to answer any questions and perhaps shed some light if perhaps I haven't done an adequate job answering the questions that you might have.
I have a question. One of the things I've objected to for a long time is the village sign at Walgreens. I assume we're, that's one of the west corner that we're talking about improving?
The two anchors that we're taking a look at are the Renwick and Route 30 intersection and as well then the 126 and 59 intersection. There's two pieces to the Route 59-126 section. And as well, thanks for reminding me to point out, part of the reason why we brought this forward at this point is that the work on Route 30 is scheduled to be completed by this time next year, and we have the ability within that I dot contract to place monument and welcome feature of some sort or another at that intersection where the hotel used to be, motel, I should be clear about that. And so with that in mind, we worked somewhat backward from there. By the time we go through the design charrette, go out for bids and get ready for bid documents, or sorry, to be able to bid this, we'd want to have this all completed so that then we could be ready to have a discussion on funding this for next fiscal year.
There's another sign which is being built right now on 127th and Naperville Plainfield Road. That's nominally an entrance to Plainfield too, across the streets of Bowling Brook. It's on private property, but maybe Upland Design could take a look or submit what they're doing, what they're coming up with, and approaching them to see how that might fit in with what we're trying to do. It is truly an entrance to Plainfield. It's a big sign. I'm not sure what's going on it. Maybe a commercial sign, but maybe we can do a little bit more with it.
I'd have to ask Mr. Prue if perhaps he could pass that along to the owners of that property. It's a good idea.
Ms. Kelly, I mean, I would like to see more, if you could, I have a couple of questions for you. I would like to see some community involvement with the design of the sign. I mean, I don't know you and I'm sure you do a fine job, but I would like to see some community involvement, whether that be with the design of the signs. I understand there's much more to it, reading this packet than just an art design. But is there a way to integrate with members of the community into the business to work together to come up with a design that's happy with it, that we'd all be happy with?
Definitely, yes. Community involvement is a key piece to this. We have three specific focus group meetings, and the community will be welcome so that we really can get input from any group that is interested, and hopefully we can get some real interest in it.
I would like to, I mean, this is my opinion. I would like to see the young people of the community invest in the future of this community. I mean, I think all of our goals here are to keep people here in Plainfield, not have them grow up and move out. And I think of, when they invest in the community and there's a part of them here, it's good for everybody. And I would like to see the designer, whether this be your company or not, work with the youth in town to design something that we all could vote on and that we'd all be happy with.
Sounds great. I just want to thank you also for taking this opportunity to review this and inviting us in here because this, as most of you know, is the community I did grow up in and came back to and grew up my business here. It's 18 years old. We work all over Chicagoland. We also do work in Indiana and Michigan for communities just like Plainfield. So it's an honor to be here tonight.
I understand the bidding process and I understand that the village often does contract with businesses for certain things, but I would like to see a bid on it, and I would hope that you would submit a bid for this project.
Well, there's a difference between a bid and a proposal. Professional services, we don't have to go out for bids. In effect, in the past year, there have been a half dozen times where we have just sought proposals for particular projects and brought that forward for the board to consider. And that's typically been our practice as an organization. It is legal, it is proper, it is complete. When we're doing, there are, when we are going out and purchasing specific items, such as in the case with the motorcycles and the like, then we do have a requirement that we go out for a bid on that. But, you know, I don't mean to put counsel on spot, but if I'm misspeaking, I think perhaps our attorney could provide additional input.
Um, if I understand the question, I mean, under Illinois law, you're required to go out to bid for construction projects unless you waive the process. And those are, you know, typically, you know, bricks and mortar kinds of projects. No requirement that you do so for these types of services. That's governed by your policy or any ordinances that you would adopt, you know, to say, okay, as to these types of services, want to require bidding for projects in excess of a certain amount. To my knowledge, you don't have such an ordinance. You could. So you can approach this any way you want because you could require, you know, proposals for anything above a certain amount, or continue with, as Administrator Murphy said, your past practice where you really haven't done it for these types of projects for these amounts. But I mean, that's, that's a board policy matter. That's, you know, a matter you have a lot of discretion on.
That's just my two cents. The board's comprised of more than one, so.
I was just trying to address you because you were asking the question.
No, that's fine. I understand.
Well, we have a- Okay, Trustee Wojcowski had mentioned, you know, having the community involved. And I look into our report and background findings. The concept development will take place across three focus group meetings. I think that would take into consideration perhaps what you were talking about, Trustee Wojcowski. That would be just a possibility. But, you know, and secondarily, what I'd like to ask Ms. Kelly, with your Upland Design group, I know you've been active in our community. You developed your group in our community. Could you tell us basically, so everyone feels comfortable, I know your abilities and I feel very comfortable in what you do with your group, could you give us some general background of some work that you have done so that everyone would have a reference point?
Sure. So a couple of projects that are at least a little bit similar to this would be the city of Naperville we're currently working with and helping them develop new standards for their downtown. That's the 41 blocks in the core of downtown Naperville, a beautiful, wonderful area. And we've spent the last eight months, we're coming to the conclusion of that project right now, with a public hearing, actually in two evenings. So where the entire public is invited in. So that process started very similarly to this one in that we started with images and words and really trying to understand what the stakeholders wanted to see in downtown and what they felt their downtown was all about. And every community feels different about their town and their space, and so we were able to get input through a very similar process with images and words and take them through to real design guidelines that met their downtown and what they see as appropriate. Another project that we finished up last year was with Iron Oaks Nature Center in Homewood Phloresmore, Olympia Fields. And in that one, we also started with images and words, and we also talked about values and really trying to understand the values of that center and those communities that take in that nature center. And the end result was actually two pieces, much like we're doing two pieces, we've talked about that for the village. And one was a master plan and the other was a signage package. And so that throughout their site, we took all of that input, very similar process to this, and was able to output a entire booklet, much like your landscape booklet, master plan for their site, as well as a signage package for them to be able to build. There's also included wayfinding. That was an extra piece that we did for that one. So those are two that are somewhat similar and very recent.
Thank you. You know, a couple of other comments I'd like to make in regard to this particular proposal project. You know what? We had discussed this in 2013, as Administrator Murphy has stated, the 2013 strategic plan action item, and I'm not going to read the action item again. Then we talked about it recently. So we've discussed it two or three times in the last three-plus years. You know, I told, I was a member of the public when we discussed that in our action groups, and I told the public and the public told me, "Do this." Well, we haven't done it yet. And what I'm saying is now that we have an action group, an action plan in a respected company, I'm saying we should approve this particular discussion in passing this proposal. One last point, and I am, I like the idea of someone local having the work, and it is considered work. I draw back on Ms. Kelly's past public duty and service. How many years were you president of the Plainfield Park District?
I served on the board for 13 years. I actually don't know how many years I was president.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking, Ms. Kelly, is just to give a graphic illustration to the public that you understand Plainfield. You understand the sensitivities of Plainfield. And I feel that you would be a very positive source to go to, to understand, not only to involve perhaps, you know, youth groups, adult groups, et cetera. You have worked in this fashion for years and years. And like I say, I'm a fan of your work and I'm a fan of what you're doing. And I really strongly feel that this board should award this proposal to Upland Design Services. Thank you.
I'm a fan of your work too, particularly the way you respond to your stakeholders. You made a design for us. You came in, you talked to the people, and you responded to what they wanted. So you have excellent track record. You also did something in Teller's Park, didn't you, for us?
I'm sorry, where?
Right out here at Teller's Park.
Um, yes, yeah. They're just finishing up the work right now to actually kind of do the spruce up with the landscape and around the memorials, and then also around Village Hall, which it's really exciting to see.
Yeah, the company does a great job, so I hope we approve it as well. I do have one question though, which goes back maybe before Mr. Murphy. Route 66 was supposed to be putting together big signs painted on some sort of building, and Mr. Garrigan, despite several questions, said, "Well, it's a work in progress." Whatever happened to those things?
The challenge was those murals that went along the, actually went along the Lincoln Corridor, is what it did, Lincoln Highway Corridor. They could not find a willing face building host for the mural to be placed upon. They were looking at a number of places in the, obviously in the downtown corridor, and couldn't find a place to place it. So that's always been the challenge on that. At this point, I don't know that those funds remain.
Well, maybe Upland Design could tweak a little bit, see if, the same situation exists now. Maybe it's a little bit different, but I was hoping we'd see a design, because some of the places they had them were rather interesting. And I never saw one for Plainfield, and I don't know whether we even ever had a design. Place it put is one thing, but did we even have a design?
I have, you know, I'll ask Mr. Prue. Perhaps he knows-
If I can just offer some background. I know the thought was, so there was, this was a grant opportunity for a number of communities to have murals, Lincoln Highway-themed murals, you know, along the same corridor as we also have the Lincoln Highway Gazebos. So there were kind of two efforts in parallel. And the thought was to have a local artist and also a site located. So we, staff did make some contacts, including proposing getting together Main Street at the time, I believe the chamber, and we were trying to have kind of an ad hoc think tank of people to brainstorm who that artist could be and also locations. There are a couple prominent locations, but with a potential for infill or a building to go in adjacent. So we were unsuccessful in finding, as Administrator Murphy noted, finding a property owner who would commit that facade for the long-term exposure of the mural, and also kind of hand in hand, didn't identify an artist as well. So it was just one of those opportunities that, you know.
Yeah, grant money may not be there, but it may be there. If you happen to have something which might fit, maybe that would, we might create a spot for it eventually. So it'd be worth at least refreshing our minds that existed as a concept at one point, so.
I guess my thought is I'm not necessarily against a no-bid process, especially when it's supporting a local company, which I think is a positive thing. My concern is is that we're getting involved and starting the process, and then once we start the process, then it just kind of self-perpetuates itself, and then it's kind of like, well, we spent the money on this, so we got to spend the money on the next stage, and we got to spend it. And I think we've talked about where the signs are located. I don't know if everybody's come to agreement on that, about the locations, about what types of signs, those kinds of things. So my concern is not necessarily about a no-bid. It's really about just having more information on the backend. And I know we're working towards bids, but even an estimate and those kinds of things and the actual locations before we've made a final decision to start spending any money at all on the project.
Can I add that? That actually is part of the process. Early on, we talked about just general, the proper locations that have already been identified. But then, the idea is there's actually three different levels of signs for different potential locations. And as part of the process, we actually will create a map, and that will come back first to staff and then to the board, so that you actually can look at, is this appropriate? And this is where we're thinking, the map looks like, you know, small, medium, large, and they're, you know, color-coded dots. And you kind of go, oh, okay, now I can kind of see how this overall look is going to be, how, what's the image going to be for the village and at what locations. And then you actually get to have input on that. That's part of the process. Well, and that will be part of the process, too. Actually, before we, you know, say this is it and take it to the public, we'll be looking at cost estimates. The idea is that we look at a couple different packages with cost estimates in them. And that gets vetted through staff first and then goes to the stakeholder, so that we're not showing something that isn't appropriate from a cost standpoint. I mean, we've done a lot of different signs, from stone to metal to masonry, I mean, everything. And so we have those costs from public bidding, and we use those to give you accurate cost estimates.
Are there any other questions? Looking for a motion in a second?
I move that we approve a project with Upland Design for $24,000.
Second.
Motion was made and-
Just a second. Could you read the whole motion, Mr. Lamb? Well, I mean, just for the people. Okay.
I can read it.
The motion was made and seconded to authorize the village president to execute a contract with Upland Design to provide image and landscape design services in the amount of $24,540 plus reimbursable expenses.
That's my motion.
Trustee Peck?
No.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Yes, there was. The motion was made and seconded by, made by Lamb and seconded by Rassich. Trustee Wojcowski? Trustee Benucci?
I'm voting yes, because if we're going to change the way we do things, we need to appropriately change the way we're doing things and not pick and choose to decide based on who comes in front of us for those services. And if that's been our past practice, and many of us on this board, with maybe the exception of Trustee O'Rourke and Trustee Wojcowski, have often voted on no-bid situations. So I would say if we want to change that, we're going to change it appropriately in whatever format we need to do so as a board. So I'll vote yes at this time.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
No.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
That motion carries for three. Administrators' report?
No report.
Management Services' report? Engineers' report?
No report.
Planning Department' report?
Thank you. I do have two items this evening. The first item is a request for temporary use approval. And this is something that I know the board is accustomed to having come before you, whether it's for a farm stand, seasonal farm stand, if it's for outdoor storage of, sales and storage of mulch at gas stations, which I know is an ongoing effort, or even, we've had a number of food truck requests in the past. This evening's request is for approval of a food truck as a temporary use, but it's somewhat distinguished or distinct from some past requests. If I can just give the location first to draw some context. The request is being presented by the property owners of a business on Michigan Street between Main Street and Naperville Plainfield Road, so just east of Route 59 in the general downtown area of the village. The property owners currently operate a salon at this location in an existing building and approached planning staff to find out their options for expanding the building or potentially building a twin building or an additional building on the lot. The property is zone B3, our highway business district zoning. Unfortunately, due to the size of the lot and the required setbacks, it's really not practical to build a new building or expand the existing building with any significant expansion. So the property owners are proposing an alternative, and that would be to have a food truck located onsite on essentially an ongoing basis, other than times it might be desirable to have at a special event, including potentially some events here in Plainfield. So staff does note that this is on property owned by the applicants, the folks who are here before you this evening. They do own an existing building and operate an existing business on the location. So there are some distinct characteristics to this request that are perhaps different from others. So their request letter is attached to my cover, brief cover memo here. The board's policy in the past has been to allow food trucks on private property with the property owner's consent, but that's, has been more of a one-time or occasional basis. So this really is a different proposal in staff's opinion than what's been presented to the board in times past. I know the applicants are here and available for questions, should the board have some questions of the applicants. But both staff and the owners would be seeking direction from the board on this temporary use request at this time.
Question about, I have no issue with them putting a food truck on their property. It's all they have space for. We're not necessarily granting approval to go throughout the village without some additional input. Is that correct?
That's correct. Our past policy has been to allow food trucks on private property with the owner's consent. But some of the events noted in their request letter would require coordinating with the host organization. So whether it's Plainfield Fest has its own application process for food vendors, Patriotic Picnic, Cruise Nights, same thing. Each event organizer may have its own policies. And so the applicants would need to approach each host organization to work cooperatively.
And there's one of the possibilities, concession stands what we have out here now for the movies and-
That request would come before the board.
It's going to come before the board, aside whether, I'm not sure what our situation is right now, who has the concessions and so on, and the impact that that might have. So that can be a further discussion. But as far as putting it on their property, I personally don't have any issue with that.
What's the definition of a food truck? I mean, the reason I ask, a food truck, to my understanding, is a truck that serves food, drives around. But this one says it's not driven in and out each day. So it becomes a permanent fixture, what, five days a week? Three days a week? How many days a week is it a permanent fixture?
Yeah, I'm glad you're asking that question, because I think, and I'll defer to the applicant as well after, but staff wanted to be clear that this was not an intermittent situation. I think their intent is to have it kind of be the ongoing location for their desired, you know, coffee and sandwiches and so forth, business that was what they originally hoped to accomplish with the building addition. So other than the times when they would be going to events, and perhaps at this time, maybe it's best to allow the applicant to speak directly to the question, but.
So I'm Sarah Blue.
Could you state your name, please?
I'm sorry. Sarah Blue, and I'm here with my husband Dustin Blue.
Can't hear you up here at all. We can't hear.
Oh, sorry. I'm Sarah Blue, and I'm here with my husband Dustin Blue. I just want to clarify that it is a coffee truck. We are specializing in coffee, bringing a different kind of coffee to Plainfield, where we'll also have paninis, smoothies, teas. But basically, it's specializing in coffee. We like to park it on property six days a week, but also, like Jonathan said, to bring it to special events and just bring something different to Plainfield than your traditional Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts.
So it'd be a permanent fixture, six days a week, and then driving around one day?
No, we're actually going to be closed on Sundays.
Closed on Sundays. Thank you.
You made mention, I think, that you looked at the size of the property not allowing for a building. I guess where I would be preferred is to see what that would look like, maybe with variances, as, you know, knowing that it doesn't maybe fit our current setbacks, but a more permanent structure, more of a regular building design, as opposed to a permanent food truck, I guess, would be where I would lean more towards. I mean, I guess, you know, I certainly appreciate the entrepreneur spirit and wanting to expand in business, certainly in our community, that's very appealing, and I appreciate that. My concern is with the trucks, as it becomes more permanent, then we get more requests. And then, you know, we'll have people selling funnel cakes and carnival food and all kinds of different things, I would guess, at different locations, which would be my concern.
Trustee O'Rourke, if you wouldn't mind, some folks down this end of the table can't hear you. You're standing too far from the microphone.
All right. Aren't we upgrading the system at some time?
Yes, sir, but you're-
You know, sir, if people can't hear what you're saying, they'll never know what you're meaning. So leave it with that.
But I, should I say it, or do you go?
I would like to add that we are open to a temporary timeline. So we would like to propose two years to try it out and see how it works in Plainfield, if you're open to that as well.
I'd like to say, I have to tell you, I can't support this, and I feel bad for your situation. But the spirit of the food truck is something that moves around to many locations on a real mobile basis all the time. It's not meant to be, you know, just there. And if we have permanent businesses all around, that we have people paying for business licenses, I mean, you think about this, we got the gas stations, the Starbucks, and the Abbeys all around you, and they're paying, you know, a fee to have an actual business in those buildings. And then we let a truck come in, and that's, and you're just one of many that, that once we open the floodgates, we're going to have this in a lot of places. I just don't think that's the spirit of the food truck. I think, I know you're stuck with what you're at. And to Trustee O'Rourke's point, if there's some variance, or there's something where someone can work with you on a permanent structure, fine, then that's fair competition. I just don't think it's fair to take permanent businesses around and then just say, we're going to allow the food trucks in. It's sitting like that. It's just wrong to those businesses all around you. I'm sorry.
There's controversy between different markets on how individuals bring a service to consumers. Right now, the taxi drivers don't like Uber drivers. We reinvent ourselves as entrepreneurs. And as Trustee Benucci had said, you know, she feels this may not be fair competition. I also believe that being innovative like yourself will also inspire innovation on the current competitor of yours, potential competitor of yours, organization and how they market to their customers. So I believe in the fair market. I don't believe in getting in the way of business. I do believe that government does essentially set the rules. And I would not like to see 15 or 20 different instances of what you're doing all over town and have us not have control of it. So that being said, I would like to see some sort of a limitation. I do agree with your concept, and I do like what you're doing. But I would support some sort of limitation on this particular matter, if this is approved tonight with some sort of a caveat. And I don't know what the rest of the board thinks as far as what's fair and what needs to be done, or if this needs to go to a cow and have us actually really go through this with maybe a half-hour conversation and look at what other communities do and how they zone or enforce this. That's my take on it. So that's where I'm at. I'd like to table this until we actually have a cow and can really get into this a little further, so that way some of our trustees' concerns are addressed and we can make sure we have a handle on this. And we just dealt with having different 5K runs flood the village. We went from a very small number to a very large number all of a sudden, and we had a really hard time handling it because of our fee structure. We had to amend that. So I think it would be very intelligent of us to go back and look and see what our communities are doing, like I said, without repeating myself. But yeah, that's where I'm at. So Mayor, would you like a motion after the other trustees are speaking to table this until we have a cow, or what's your take?
I'm at the will of the board, so whatever you, whatever you feel comfortable with, we'll do.
I don't see how it can be competitive, Trustee Peck, because you own a building, you have to pay for your building license and all the things there, and then I can come along. It's not a question of being innovative. I'm fine with that. As many people know, I am a coffee lover in every direction, believe me. But I just don't think, no matter what the business is, when you start crossing into paninis and the different things that are going on there, how does someone who's expected to pay for everything when they own the building, or they're leasing the building, compete? And if you think this will be the only one that'll come to us, no, it won't. And I just, I just think that this is not the spirit of what the food truck, the food truck was designed to come to special events and provide some options for food in different areas when you may not have those at, say, Plainfield Fest or something like that, where you have different opportunities. But I think somebody adding this to the front of their business because they can't work it out with the building itself is the wrong way to go. That's just my opinion.
Would you change your mind if it wasn't on wheels, by chance?
No, I will not change my mind. If it's something that's just sitting in front of your place like that, that's not what the design is supposed to be. It's supposed to be moving around. And if we say yes to that, then who's going to manage to know if it's, you know, moving around or not? I know, I don't, I think either you put a permanent structure, or if you want to go in the food truck business, you do it in the appropriate manner, and that truck moves. And it is not sitting in front of your hair salon, selling to your customers there when there's businesses all around.
Excuse me, Jonathan, do we, we do not really actually define food trucks in such like permitting use and that, do we?
That's correct. No, I don't believe there's a formal definition for food truck.
Well, Mr. Peck's point, maybe it would be a time, and I'm sorry to put you off at this time, but maybe it'd be the time to have a workshop, include this as, as one of the options to talk about, and establish some sort of rules and regulations of, so when they do come forward, then we can say yes, no, or whatever.
I think the definition of food truck needs to be defined. You're right, Mr. Mayor, I believe.
Okay. I'm sorry to have to say that, but I think that's what we'll have to do. So it'll be a future workshop for us.
I, I'm actually kind of, kind of thrown for a loop, because I thought Plainfield was definitely open to food trucks, and maybe it's something that we do three or four days a week. Would that be-
We are open, and we are open to business, and we've always said that. But it's a sense of, there's a lot of people involved in the mix. So I think what the mayor's suggesting, what Trustee Peck suggested, maybe we need more discussion to get these definitions down, so it's not someone's opinion of it. But I, no, I don't think it can just be like that. The idea is, you're trying to take it, put it on a concrete slab, and for the majority of the time, sell at that spot. And then occasionally, when, when time permits or permits permit, you get to these different places. That's not the spirit that I see. But then again, if we haven't defined it, I'm just going by what I think. And if I'm a business owner in one of those surrounding areas, I am not going to be happy if someone, you know, sets up like that. But that's a discussion for another time.
People could do, Ms. Blue. We'll set up a cow, a workshop, make sure that you're invited, notified, in plenty of time. And then you can come forth, you know, pose your arguments to us, and then we can go forward. How's that?
Okay.
Okay? Let's do that.
Thank you.
A motion to table this?
Without any motion to begin with, there's no need to table.
If that's the consensus, then you'll put it on a cow.
All right.
And then, Mr. Mayor, may, just returning to the agenda, relative to the Planning Department report, there was a second item. And this is just our annual presentation of the activities of the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals for the trailing 12 months. So if there are any questions, be happy to address those.
No, we can't hear. I didn't hear any.
Just a Zone of Appeal report you have in your bag.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry about that.
I just, I just had a quick question, Jonathan. I know there was a couple vacancies. Has there been any progress to filling those vacancies?
Yes, actually, due to just one schedule conflict, we have six of seven, there were seven interested parties. The mayor, the chairman of the Plan Commission, and I have interviewed six of the seven, and we hope to interview the seventh as soon as tomorrow, perhaps. So I would anticipate that two names will be submitted.
Two openings?
For two vacancies.
It's taken a long time because of the scheduling problem. Mr. Kiefer and also some of the applicants haven't been available. And the last one, it's been a week. We've been chasing.
Those seven candidates? That's good.
Yes.
That's good. It's good to hear.
And I might, I just might make the comment, they saw this on email that Amy puts out. And so they responded through there.
Building Department' report?
I have the operation reports for May. Glad to answer any questions.
Just a comment. It's seemed like an awfully busy construction period based on the number of permits. And I noticed the total for just the month of May is $7 million almost in improvements. That's pretty amazing. And you're handling them all on-
And you're handling them all in a reasonably fast manner, too?
We're trying.
If you, if you are, it's truly impressive because there's an awful lot of permits and projects going on right now. To stay on top of all that's got to be an impressive load for your group. So, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Public Works report?
Public Works report?
Police Chiefs report?
Thank you. In April, as you will recall, the staff presented to the board an overview of the village's, status of the village's current red light camera program, safety program. That overview included a background with respect to the history of the cameras, the history of the ordinance, as well as the current status and history of the service agreement with our vendor, American Traffic Solutions. At the conclusion of that presentation, staff thought it would be appropriate and with the board's recommendation to come back with some changes to the ordinance that we think will help ensure proper management of that program, as well as continued compliance with state law. So before you tonight, we have an amended ordinance. Staff has gone through the current status of the state law related to this type of a program. It's looked at the ordinance and its current format. It's gone through and made some changes to that ordinance to ensure additional compliance with state law, again, as well as proper management of the program. The amended ordinance that's before the board tonight for approval provides for some modifications, and those modifications include a change in the supervisory role of the program so that it's not simply the police department or the chief or one of his designees. In fact, it would be the village, meaning this board, that would be, that would carry that departmental authority. It also removes any references to the red, to turn on red. We do not enforce that. That has never been enforced since the inception of this ordinance. There were some references in there. I think at the time, my recollection is when this ordinance was adopted back in '08, there was some talk that maybe that would change. The, the, it, it seems to be that that's something that is not going to be of interest to the board or, or staff for that reason, to enforce any right turns on red. So we've removed all references to that. The other, one other change that has been made primarily to address some concerns of the board was to provide some broader discretion with the administrative adjudication process. And with that said, the statute, state statute provides for very specific defenses to these violations. We've expanded this ordinance to allow for some additional defenses and also to allow discretion with the administrative law judge so that he can have a further basis for possibly dismissing or denial of, of some of the alleged violations. What we've been doing, just so you're aware as a practice, from a prosecution standpoint is if we do have a situation that wasn't built into the state statute or built into the ordinance, we've been exercising some prosecutorial discretion to seek a dismissal of those particular violations. This ordinance or the amendment to this ordinance will give that additional discretion to the adjudicator, which we think is important. Also, to go along with some of our current practices, the ordinance is currently modified, or the proposal before the board, it's modified to allow for individuals to avoid a personal court appearance. They can simply submit an affidavit, which is something that they can now do online. We just thought it important to include that in the ordinance so that people are aware of it. That means that they can submit their bases for their defense via affidavit, and it can be addressed by the administrative adjudicator without their personal attendance at court. Again, that is a practice that we're engaging in now. Additionally, we are allowed, making sure that the website address is available on the notification, the violation notification. It is currently available, but we want everyone to be aware of that so that it's built into the ordinance. And finally, there was one change that we had not included in our ordinance that state law had modified last year, and that was to give people additional time, should there be a determination of liability at the adjudication process, to allow them an additional 28 days to remit payment without any type of penalty. It remains the $100 fine. Currently, our ordinance had only provided for 14 days. The state law requires a minimum of 21 days. So with this modification, we're actually building in an additional seven days for people to remit that payment. With these amendments, we're asking for the board's approval. If there are any questions, there actually is a representative here this evening from our vendor. David Mast is here from American Traffic Solutions, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions as well.
We never intended to enforce the turn on the right, could people kind of roll into that turn. We took out the definition of it. The definition looked like, specifics, says no turn on red, and we've taken it out, so no matter what happens on a right turn, on a light, we're not going to enforce it.
It would not be a violation.
That was, that was sort of our intent to begin with.
That's correct.
Not if it said no turn on the red, but, but just in general, we didn't really want to do that because that's where a lot of the trouble was coming on Bulling Brook and so on.
And I think that accounted for some of the larger numbers, if you'll recall, in the presentation that Sergeant Munson gave back in April, there were some large numbers of what he termed as events, and those events really result in only about 9% of violations being issued, or citations rather, being issued. So the event number is high, but the citation number is actually quite low.
The other question is, I noticed, and I don't remember from the earlier document, maybe it was there, but late payment is, is double?
It is double.
Was it that way before?
It has always been that way. It's built into the state statute.
I just didn't recall that, but the extra time is probably beneficial, bending over backwards. We've basically ministered it very well as far as I'm concerned. It's met the kind of guidelines that we had. As I personally heard, very few complaints. Nobody's happy to get a citation, but on the other hand, the process is fair, which is, and it's even better now than it was before. So I think that nice job of putting it together.
Mr. Mayor, in switching the authorization to supervise from the police department to the village as a whole, does that include the contracts with the vendors? When this latest contract is up, will that come back before the village board, before a, before an extension is signed?
Yes, the purpose of that change, one of the purposes of that change would be to make sure that any changes, whether it be from an ordinance standpoint or from a contractual standpoint, be presented to the board for approval. Even renewals.
Jonah, a quick question for you. These don't have page numbers. It would be on the back of the fourth page. It lists the different defenses under section 5-230. I'll give everybody a second to flip over to that. And in our discussion, there was one point that I had made that, and I discussed it with the chief, about a motorcycle stopping at a red light, then having clearance legally by only state law, then to go through the red light.
Correct.
Does that need to be listed here, or?
I, I don't believe that it does because it already is provided for by state law, so it would technically not be a violation of the red light signal.
Okay, so they just won't get a ticket and have to defend themselves, essentially is how this would play out?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I can tell you, in the course of the administration of this program, from what I, in prosecuting it since 2009 now, I have not seen a single violation related to a motorcycle.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm voting no tonight, not because you didn't do a good job, but I just, I don't agree with the whole, the program as a whole. I don't believe that it actually makes the intersection safer. I do like the idea of having surveillance for traffic investigation if we weren't issuing tickets, if there was a bad accident and we had a camera at that intersection on our public right of way, but I, I don't believe that it's going to, has or will reduce accidents by having that there. Most of the videos we saw, those individuals that went through the red lights couldn't care less if they, I shouldn't say care less, they didn't even know they were going to get a ticket when they went through. I mean, that's, that's my thought, and we already went through that, and we gave staff direction to move forward, and you brought it forward, but I just wanted you to know why I'm voting no tonight. It's nothing to do with the quality of work that you put in. You did a lot of good work on this. Thank you.
I had a question. Is the driver's license suspension, is that anything new or has that always been on there?
That has always been there. That state laws, that portion of the law has been in effect since it was adopted several years back, but it requires five violations before any suspension goes into effect. We, left turn, a very small percentage. I, I don't have an exact number, but it is a very small percentage. Most of the violations are the straightaways.
I'd like to thank you for your work, and while I do disagree with the program, the board, this current board has voted to keep it in place, and I will support the ordinance. It's addressed my concerns.
Thank you.
We're seeking a motion in a second.
Move we approve the amended ordinance related to automated traffic enforcement system.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3273, amending chapter five, article nine, relating to an automated traffic law enforcement system. Trusty Peck?
No.
Trusty Rasich? Trusty Wajowski? Trusty Bonucci?
Yes.
Trusty Lamb?
Yes.
Trusty O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Attorneys report?
Thank you. Under the Illinois Open Meetings Act, the board must at least twice a year review closed session minutes to determine if they should remain confidential. I've reviewed the minutes and would make a recommendation that the minutes from closed sessions on December 7th, 2015, January 11th, 2016, April 22nd, 2016, be disclosed as there's no longer need for confidentiality and that the remaining minutes remain closed as there's a need for confidentiality.
Question. Based upon that requirement, it, it seems like when you look at what's being, I guess, unclassified or being released, that there's not a lot of detail in our minutes. So I mean, based upon the fact that we need to review them and then release them, are they assuming that there's more detail, or should there be more detail in our minutes?
Well, under the act, it doesn't prescribe any certain amount of detail, and the reason you have probably what I would call more summary minutes in terms of the meetings is because a number of years ago, state law changed to require that closed sessions be recorded. So unlike maybe 15, 20 years ago, when that wasn't a requirement, although communities still did that, public bodies still did that, now there's verbatim minutes recorded. And so if somebody says, well, I want to take a look at, you know, what occurred six months ago, you have the ability to, board members do, not third parties, to, to listen to those minutes.
And we're not releasing those tapes. We're just releasing the written minutes.
These minutes, yeah. What you have before you. That's a good question because, you know, I've been doing this long enough to remember when those weren't required to be recorded verbatim, and, and the law was changed to require that, and so, you know, you do have that ability to say, okay, I want to listen to that. It's probably pretty rare when that happens, but the minutes that you have are basically like an outline of, you know, here's the exception under the statute, here's generally what was discussed, but, you know.
Qualifies.
Yeah, and you're, you're required though by law to have those, you know, recorded.
So do we dispose of those recordings at some point, then?
Yes, we do. We have the ability to do that.
We have a policy internally for that?
We have a policy. The village clerk could detail our particular policy for you.
It's a board decision to release.
It's a board decision. We're not-
They have that periodically to destroy tape.
Yeah, well, you know, we're not required to, but we can, and, and usually periodically. There's a minimum in the statute that you have to hold them, but you can choose to destroy them at a certain point. A year and a half. Thank you.
Just a quick clarification with the clerk. Who has access to these tapes once they're, they have data on them?
I do.
And after that, who does?
No one.
And after that, who can get access to them legally in some circumstance?
The only people that would have access to the tapes would be a judge or the public access counselor. Yes.
Just to follow up, Trusty Peck, it's, it's a good question because even in a normal civil case, let's say there was a, a trip and fall and, and for some reason, somebody wanted to see if the board discussed a sidewalk in, in closed session, that wouldn't be something that they could get through the discovery process, or even they could ask a judge, but, you know, there's no provision allowing a judge to enter such an order. So those, I mean, other than, you know, the board clerk, I mean, those, those tapes aren't something that third parties can have access to.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, we're seeking board consideration of a motion to release the executive session minutes of December 7th, 2015, January 11th, 2016, and April 22nd, 2016, and to keep the remaining minutes confidential. So move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trusty Peck?
Yes.
Trusty Rasich? Trusty Wajowski?
Yes.
Trusty Bonucci?
Yes.
Trusty Lamb?
Yes.
Trusty O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Reminders?